All right, we can call the meeting to order now. 6:02. Any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
I have one.
Okay.
And he's here. The town meeting, the town meeting study committee has a request for some funding and I didn't check to see if he sent you this.
I did.
You did send this to everybody?
Yeah.
I made some copies, but I don't know where they are.
There isn't much, but yeah.
Okay, so that's, we can either do that now or, oh yeah, here are the other copies.
You'd probably like to get home rather than wait until the end of the meeting, wouldn't you?
Well, I was actually going by and I thought if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and I also thought I'd mention the start of the professional audit, but I'd be happy to do that at the end of our Treasury report.
Does that go in here too?
No, this is what John has submitted. Chris, I did make copies of it, I just stapled them to something else.
This, no, you're gonna have trouble getting that clip around that wad. Okay.
So you want to hold that until the Treasurers report?
Would that be all right with you?
Fine, sure.
It'll be 10 minutes at least.
Yeah. Public comment. Approved bills and payroll orders, we're doing that. Approved minutes from the July 23 Select Board Meeting.
May 23rd.
May 23rd, did I say that? I'm sorry. Anybody have any thoughts on this or should we move it as read or printed? I signed it. You did?
Mm-hmm.
You want to move that?
Yeah, sure.
Be second. I'll leave approved the minutes from the last meeting on the 23rd. Say aye. Aye. Okay. Town Clerk's report.
I will be out of the office tomorrow both day and night hours. My assistant will be there. I'm going to the sixth grade graduation at Woodbury. I'm in kindergarten.
And in the morning?
In the morning, they're doing a
Some tests on their bodies.
A little ceremony.
Oh, nice.
So I will also be at that. And Friday, this past Friday, Pam and I went down to, I call it Jay Morgan's, but what's the name of the big building?
Tavern.
In Capitol Plaza.
Tavern.
Dare.
Plaza.
In March for training on the new tabulators that all the towns have received. That will be put into effect for the August primary. It's basically the same thing, the warning screen used to be itty-bitty and now it's fair size. And once you put your ballot in, you have to wait there until it gives you the green check mark saying that your ballot was read and you're okay to go.
So, does that put the Board of Civil Authority out of business?
No. Good try.
Makes sense.
Because there will always be writings. Writings.
They're questionable, Dallas, yeah.
And one day last week, Brandy and I did a NEMRE training
Open RPA.
For the year in closing. And our recordings that are coming into town, they have slowed off. They're all caught up today.
I'm sorry, what is?
The recordings?
Oh, yeah.
For the land transfers and
Great, great, yeah.
And I also took it upon myself to have the bathroom light in the town hall replaced.
Wow.
Because I went in one day and it would not work. I went in the next day, it would work. I was worried about a shore someplace that would cause a fire.
Yeah.
So I had that replaced.
Did anybody look at it to see?
Yeah, Tim Higgins.
He said?
Yep, he said it needed to be done.
Oh, good. Is that it, or?
That's it.
Brandy?
Yeah. Uh, payroll, that's before you. Three weeks worth, $13,151.66 AP, totaling $14,478, $78.79. Cash receipts, there was an error on the state education. OSS, I'm gonna say it wrong.
That's U. OSS, UED or whatever it is.
Ended up refunding us $27,972.40. So that's a nice cushion that we weren't expecting to get back.
Where does that go?
That would be nice if the board could possibly take it to reduce taxes this year, but that's up to the board.
So where will, when will that decision come to us?
When will you make that?
Yeah.
Let's say
When we talk about the
The middle of July of carrying forward.
When we talk about the tax rate, when we start dealing with that, okay.
Same, yes. Same thing with the highway, but that's a different, yeah. Delinquencies, $4,857.04. I did a transfer of $12,000 to cover bills. So, a couple things I want to clear up. So on your last page of your financials, your due to, due from, I would like the board to make a motion and vote on clearing the negative for the Planning Commission, which is Fund 16 of $1,773.70 to come out of account number 0151520.03. Which is zoning board slash Planning Commission supplies. And then going forward, whether it's something that the board puts into, because right now the Planning Commission has zero money and going forward, the zoning regulations need to be done, there's
There should be a line item for the Planning Commission. I mean, there's a line item for the Conservation Commission.
There should be an article.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't have to, well, it should just be in the budget if they're gonna have more expenses.
Which they will, yes.
So you said 01-5?
01.
Yeah.
So it's the, which it will be over because it's a one-time, but it's
It's just a budget.
Yeah, it's just a budget.
I just, I'd make that motion.
I would second that motion. Hold, favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next thing is the town of Hardwick paying them $7,000 out of this fiscal year and
We haven't decided that yet.
You know better than to help, Tim, and I think you better.
I agree, but at the last meeting, the last thing you said was, we don't have to decide on that right away, but we might as well.
No, we do have to decide on it right away. I said you don't have to decide on it tonight.
Brandy is saying you have to decide on it.
Well, we can have a bunch to
We might as well. We have money for, out of this year's budget?
Yes.
You have carryover from last year and you've accumulated carryover from this year, so in your due to, due from, the highway has currently $157,000.
Whoa.
You remind us, is this West Woodbury, $7,000?
Yes.
Yeah. No, trade-off.
The trade-off.
It's a trade-off number.
Yeah. With the idea that we can negotiate next year whether we pay it or do some loan form or whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
But this year, means we pay.
And whether it needs to become an item line that is just in case cushion, it wouldn't be a bad thing, because if our guys can't get to it, then we're in the same position of handing over the $7,000.
Are we getting closer to having an ongoing understanding about West Woodbury with Hardwick?
Oh, we got it.
Yeah.
They own $7,000 above and we can either send our loader and a man and a mower out there and pay for the $7,000 or we can pay them cash. And being shorthanded this year, I'm suggesting that you pay the $7,000.
Okay.
I make a motion that we pay $7,000 to the town of Hardwick to do snow plowing and sanding in West Woodbury for the winter of 2022 to 2023.
I would second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved.
So would you like me to make an item line that states that for expense?
We can't, you
We can make
I can create it, you can budget it, but your expense is there, so we know what it was for.
Sure.
Just please. Anything else, Brandy?
Nope.
Thank you, Brandy. So Michael's not here, let's
Oh, we were gonna talk about John. John had something about the auditors.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the, Rick, Rick and Sullivan Powers came last week, I guess, to kick off the audit and a few things, a few early takeaways. Early on, but he just seems terrific, just wonderful. And someone Robin has worked with in the past in a different, in a state capacity, so he's known to us. The, you know, in the early, what, we're light on written policies, but plenty of sound practices. There's a lot that he, he said, I'm gonna make life, going over things, I'm gonna make life better and simpler for you. There were a ton of, you know, kind of bullet point questions that he had with Brandy and after most of the answers, he said, I like that. So I think it's gonna be a terrific process and the, you know, I'm pretty sure where the auditors are gonna come out is recommending that we do this every year, which they'll probably
Twenty-five thousand dollars a year?
So, you'll recall, we got the price down to $18,000 for this year. And they do an annual audit, it was in front, on front porch form for Calis, for 15.5, so we ponyed up for something every year, probably get the price down a little bit. But in addition to checking the books, making sure all the practices are sound, there's a resource for Brandy to be able to call during the year when you have accounting questions, because right now it's pretty much flying in the wind to not taking anything away from the two auditors when they're asked to help on something like that, but you know, one of us is a financial person, so, and even if we were having an outside accountant or treasurer can call and say, so how should we treat this, I think is really important.
Maybe there's another level where they could be a consultant at an hourly wage rather than doing the whole thing every year?
Well, we'll see what the auditors recommend, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a full audit, that gets recommended that the select board can do whatever it wishes. That was pretty much it. I was really encouraged, I thought they'll be back after the books close to starting the actual audit. That's it.
So the software is okay in terms of?
He'll be tweaking, so straightforward, a CPA looks at our books and it's cash slash modified accrual, you're either one or the other. He, and ours has been a blend, so your balance sheet will look a little different, you're not gonna see delinquencies on there, it's not money you actually have. But he was, yeah, he's, it was very nice in reassuring and
Great.
And he's very happy and very familiar with the software that the town uses for finances.
Great.
And the town meeting committee?
I don't, you know, if you have any questions about expenses, I'm happy to go with that.
$379.36 for mailing a postcard to everybody in town, or every household anyways, household?
Yeah.
And a few dollars for some resource books. Sound good to you?
Basically, we'll be sending out a survey in the next, probably end of this week. Still will be some tweaking, keep sending it around, happy to have any comments or suggestions on it.
But wasn't the post, excuse me, the postcard, if people want to get it online, they can do that, or if they need to get it in hard print or whatever.
Just to make sure that we're really making this accessible to everybody, in addition to putting it on front porch form, we'd send a postcard that says, here's the URL for the survey, or if you'd rather have it in writing, contact the town office and one will email it to you.
So you want to approve that expenditure?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. John, you guys Do you want to cash now or?
Thank you for dealing with our technical
No, no, it was, it was great to you.
I'll see you the other night.
It was great to meet with you guys. It's not true.
Chris was on Zoom and I, in the spring, there was a loose clamp anyway, the camera kept going, so Chris would be looking at the floor.
It's all right, you hear me. Fair enough. Great work. Thank you guys for all of your work. Really appreciate it.
It's a, it's a really good group of people.
And you guys, you guys have moved this forward in a really functional way. Thank you so much.
See what happens.
John, I wanted to offer to you that the town has remote access equipment and I would be happy to set it up for you if you want to do something more than your
My list was called right tomorrow, so I didn't seem to notice that you brought, we're here. I can take that one an hour, give you a buzz tomorrow.
Give me a buzz tomorrow.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Thank you, John.
So we skipped over the planning commission.
So let's see, what did you guys? So, sorry that, you know, I should have sent this to you a week ago, but something to look at tonight, because we're already talking about it.
Thank you.
So, I'd just like to give you a quick update on the Planning Commission. You know, we're in the stage now with the town plan, did get approved by the Central Mount Regional Planning Commission Municipal Review Committee. Skip and I met with them last week, so that our town plan will go before the Central Mount Regional Planning Commission Board of Commissioners tomorrow evening. And usually if the Municipal Review Committee has approved the plan, it's pretty much kind of slides through, so I would say that, that our town plan has been approved by the Regional Planning Commission, but not officially yet, tomorrow night, unfortunately. So, so we're, I, we're pretty good. I think we're, that's kind of the last step. We do wait to hear from the Department of, I can't remember which one it is, Commerce and Community Development, I think is the one that also oversees the town plans. They were sent a copy of it, I don't think we've heard anything back from them at all. I don't know if any select board members have. So, I don't know what they're gonna say about it or what they have to say about it, but. So we're, you know, at this point, now that the town plan is done and approved, we're working on different aspects of implementing different goals in the town plan. The first things that we're really centered on at this point is a village center designation, which we'll talk about a little bit more tonight, both for Woodbury Village and South Woodbury Village. And then the other topic that we're gonna be exploring is a feasibility study for Woodbury Village for wastewater treatment. It's kind of, sort of what needs to happen first before any kind of development or revitalization in the village can happen. So this would be a feasibility study that would happen first. I've talked with Lynette Cloudon and Tom Brown, who are sort of the two people that oversee the wastewater feasibility study. There's funding available, it's kind of an elaborate process. Lynette will be meeting with us remotely next Monday night to talk about that program a bit more. I've had conversations with both of them last week. So that's kind of where, and then of course, and then there's the whole zoning issue, we, we will be exploring that too. We couldn't meet with anyone from the Regional Planning Commission at our Monday meeting coming, so that'll probably be something that we begin to learn a little bit more about at our July meeting. So we're pretty much kind of just trying to learn what these different things entail, choosing, you know, choosing what we want to get going. These are the three that I've mentioned are definitely priorities. You know, there's a lot of other things in the town plan and we'll slowly be going through those and kind of figuring what else we, we can do. So the village center designation, what do you do with my copy?
Oh, you gave me two copies, so here's yours.
So it's a, basically, it's just what it says, it's an application, it's definitely a process. And we have a number of things that are on the checklist, which starts on page six. We pretty much already, some of them we've already done. And just to kind of backtrack a little bit, we met at our last meeting in May with Richard Amore, who oversees that program. He met with us remotely, went over the program and he, what we'll be doing basically is working kind of hand in hand with him to put this application together. So, you know, one of the things that we need to do is just put together a basic cover letter, which the Planning Commission will do. Second on the checklist is authorization from town or village select board or trustees, and that's what we're, you know, gonna be discussing tonight. Notification to the Regional Planning Commission and the Regional Development Corporation, that's on my list for tomorrow. And then part four was a confirmed planning process, which, that's with the approval from the Regional Planning Commission, we, that is done. We need to come up with a village center designation boundary map, so we kind of need to figure out what that boundary for the village center is gonna be. And that's different from, I know in our zoning, that the RISAS designation for what the village is, but this would be kind of a nucleus of that village boundary that's in the, in the zoning. And Richard Amore did come up with a tentative idea for that, which the Planning Commission liked, so we'll probably just go with that after, you know, we'll probably discuss that some more. And when I say we, I'm talking about the Planning Commission. And we do have some map makers, Michael Sadler has skills with that, and there are a couple other younger folks in town that also do, so Michael said he would help kind of saddle them into that project. And we need to take some photographs, easy enough. And then the number seven, the municipal plan integration, it's all in our town plan. Richard Amore has already reviewed the town plan. And, you know, different places where it is required to be mentioned in the town plan, it's there. And I think that's thanks to Claire Rock from the Regional Planning Commission, who was basically our guide and put together the town plan. And then there are a few other things under other required information that we'll need. So I think the big thing for us at the moment is to put together this cover letter and then the, and the map also. And we should, and what, what we'll do is put together the application as we think it should be done and we'll send it to Richard Amore, he'll look at it, review it, and if there's anything else that needs to be there or any changes, he'll send it back to us. And then when he's okay with it, then we'll send it in as a formal application. I think we'll probably, we might try to do both villages at the same time, we're definitely more focused on Woodbury Village, so we might do that one first and do South Woodbury second. I'm not quite sure how, how that'll go, but. And, you know, the, and then a part of what I gave you, it just, there's a, I'm trying to think on the page, but, so the, the reason for doing this, that's a big question, is that this really opens up the door to Woodbury for any kind of funding, for anything that we want to do here in the village, both as a municipality, private property owners in the village center. It, there's just a wealth of funding that becomes available for anything in the village center that we wanted, wanted to do, or a private landowner or entrepreneur wanted to do, you know, somebody wanted to try to create a new store, there would be funding to help that. But it seems like a, a good thing to do if we're gonna, you know, in the town plan, many, many people mentioned revitalizing the village center, especially Woodbury Village, so this seems like a good first step towards that. Any, yes, Peter?
One question and then an observation. One, who's gonna be able to access the municipal septic system?
Whoever needs to, I would think, in the village center.
That would be, including crossing Route 14 if need be?
Yeah.
Okay. And it would be large enough to do that?
I would assume so. We'll have to see what the feasibility study comes up with. I know in talking with Woodbury residents, they were suggesting that a siting for that could be across Route 14, so
You mean Village Green?
No, no, a little further up the hill.
So the other, is an observation, years back, there was another consultant that came in about the town plan, I think it was from Woodstock, and it might have been when the fire department was first
Yes, that was, I'm
What's his name, Richard? Richard?
He did, he did Danvilles.
Yeah, he did Danville and he also created a village plan for us, which is an amendment in the town plan. I can't remember his name.
Anyway, but
Anyway, yeah.
I'm wondering, did that have any bearing on what you've done relative to his work?
Well, his work could be part of what we might want to implement in the future, yes.
Of course, when he was doing that, we had more buildings than we do now.
Right, we had a store.
But that was triggered by the fact that people didn't like the idea of sending the fire department to South Woodbury, they wanted, clearly wanted it in the village, so that's when he was hired to
Right. And, you know, when he was hired, there was that issue and it was suggested to the town, especially the, you know, the people that came to those meetings originally for, for the new firehouse, that we not only look at what the fire department needs, but what the village needs.
Right.
So that was the whole, you know, impetus behind that village planning. And there were a number of people in, in town that were involved.
That was active, yeah.
Yeah.
How many acres would you have to have for that?
There's no, there's no minimal limit or maximal limit. It's more based on what's actually, like in the, in the map that Richard Amore just did quickly, it would go out, to pass the auto shaman a little bit, and then down the road this way, probably down to like, not Bailey, what's the name of the road?
Blake?
Blake Hill Road, yeah.
Okay, that's not my question.
Yeah.
My question is, how many acres does this facility need to be built on?
Oh, for a septic system?
I have no idea. That, that, that's, will be a result of this, this study that may or may not happen. That's, that's an answer that'll come later. That's, that's an answer that'll come later. We have to do the study first. I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, it's a pretty small area and a pretty small number of households, businesses that would be served. So I can't imagine it being too big. It's not like Montpelier or Hardwick.
So would it be mandatory that everybody in the village will have to go on to that?
I think, I don't know that answer to that either. My guess is that people would have the choice. But you know, there are like auto shaman, they don't have bathroom facilities. The, the Methodist church doesn't have. Other people have holding tanks, so.
So it could possibly be required, for example, if somebody has a failed system and they don't have other options?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know the, I don't know the answers to those. But hopefully we'll find out what those answers are.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to have to go, go a ways to put all the affluent.
Right, yeah. And you know, the feasibility study may say not feasible. You know, we, we have these two brooks, we have wet ones on either side. So, you know, my guess is it's got to be somewhere out of the base of this, this valley that it's here.
Little valley, little marsh.
Yeah. Yeah, so that'll be something that'll happen down the road, the answers to those questions. And you know, judging from my conversations with, with these two folks, just the whole funding process for the feasibility study, it's pretty elaborate. It's going to take us probably a year just to do, to, you know, do the application to get, get the funding. Yeah.
There might also be some ARPA money next year.
Right, well, this, they have, according to Tom Brown is the financial person, there's all kinds of money just waiting there to be spent. So it may not, you know, the ARPA money may not be needed for that.
You might be able to do like a matching grant?
If there was, if there was such a matching grant setup, and I don't know if there is or not, but the ARPA funds would be perfect for that.
Yeah, I'm not understanding those.
Yeah, and if we knew that ahead of time, you know, what we could do is put that matching fund in some kind of reserve with the ARPA, ARPA funds for, just for that. It could be designated for that. And then when we need it, it's theirs. And I think in that way, we would have passed the, the ARPA criteria or, or, you know, it needs to be spent by a certain amount of time. Is it 2024?
Yeah. Yeah, as long as that transfers made into the planning commission, yeah, there's no question. It'd be fine.
And you know, with a designated use, we should, because I have a feeling that, you know, it's probably going to take a stretch of time just to get the application for funding done. And I, you know, I, I have a readout and some notes about some of the things that we need to do, but it's, it's a major project. And then the feasibility study will probably take at least a year or more. So it could be a couple of years before we, before we know. So I'm hoping that the select board is okay with letting the planning commission plan on having your approval for these village center designations. That's one of the criteria that we need for the application that we made.
Does that need to be voted on or do you just want?
It should be voted on and it should be reflected in the minutes so that we have proof that the select board has okayed planning commission going through the, the application.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the select board approves the efforts of the planning commission in applying for village center designation for Woodbury Center and South Woodbury Villages.
Is that adequate?
That sounds good to me.
Hopefully that's clear enough for.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good to go.
So we'll get on that.
Our subject, are you going to be around for a bit? I'm kind of, I'm kind, I don't know if we want to do it personally, but the whole pavilion thing seems to be sort of adrift right now. And I, maybe we can just talk personally about that.
It is on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
It's under, under other business though, but we can move it.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm planning on sticking around for a good part of the meeting. So we could do it now if you'd like. I did bring copies of the new MOU.
I had shut down my computer just before our last.
Yeah.
That's why I asked you to make one.
Let's go ahead and move it.
Each of you.
Is that, let's not do it under other business, let's continue with it.
So I was saving papers, so there's other stuff on the other side here, ignore that.
Well, you know, I don't know, I couldn't, you could give both signatures on one page, but I couldn't do it because it was in a PDF.
Well, it did print out on one page, thankfully.
But except, yeah, but except. Yeah, but the, the other signature line is on the other page.
Oh, okay, well, don't worry about that.
Okay, so they did make the correction on the description of the property. It is adjacent to town property that the school building is located on, which is this three acres, bordered on the opposite side by the wetland. I don't know why they still say this divided into two parcels, but anyways.
Well, it is.
One parcel is the one where the building's going to be located and the other one is owned by the town. But they did not approve my suggestion that they not say, "All decisions shall be final."
Yeah, that was, I, I left that out in the draft that I sent back to them and the lawyers put it back in.
Well, I guess we should have had our own lawyer then. It just doesn't seem very cooperative.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So who ensures the building and maintains it?
The school.
The school, because it's on school property?
Yes, yes.
But it does say the town shall procure and maintain general liability insurance for their use and shall include the school as an additional insured. So.
Which we do.
Anything that's not a town, that's not a school function, has to be approved or insured under the town's liability insurance.
And that's similar to the arrangement that we have with the school for the library and this.
And this space.
Same one, which is in there.
So has this rendition been passed through the lawyer in the hierarchy of the?
Yes, it's been passed through the lawyer. I don't know if it was done before the school board's June 7th meeting. I, I did send it to them the day before, so didn't have a lot of time to turn it around. But that wasn't clear in Lisa's email.
No.
But whether it is or has been or not, I think that they, I can't say. Were you at that meeting, Peter? The school board meeting?
No.
No, okay. So, yeah, I don't know what happened at the school board meeting as far as the draft that we sent back to them. If they were okay with it, as long as the lawyers were okay with it, then we should be good. And if the select board is okay with it, the way it's written, we can let them know that. And then it would be a, you know, a formality if the school board hasn't approved this last draft.
Okay. So we should probably make a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
One second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we'll.
Going around and around for a while.
And that's kind of the nature of these things. I will let Lisa know that it was approved by the select board and I'll ask her whether or not the, what the school board, you know, if they did approve it at their meeting last week. And if they didn't, then I guess we have to wait until for them to approve it. I guess they have a meeting in July.
In the meantime, I can sign it and date it for, since we just moved it?
On our, on our part of it, let me get you a copy that doesn't have other stuff on the back. I can probably scrunch it so it's all on one page, so there isn't a little bit on the back.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll bring it down to the town office. Or I could just email it to you and then you could print it out.
I could do that. Okay, whatever's easy.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, thank you very much.
So are you thinking of some construction maybe this year?
We, the committee hopes to have the thing built by the time school starts.
Wow. Have you got some volunteers lined up?
We've been told that we do.
Oh, wow.
I haven't, I haven't seen them line yet.
Has Jamie, has Jamie done anything down there yet?
I don't know, I don't think so. I haven't gone down there to.
I think we would have known, Larry would have probably said something.
Yeah, Larry has Jamie Benjamin hired, or not hired, but volunteered, I should say, and lined up to go down with his equipment and clear out the trees that need to be dropped and the brush. And then the committee needs to kind of finalize the building materials, which is kind of in Peter and Larry's laps. And as soon as the materials start arriving, we'll start putting the thing together.
Well, one of the thoughts was is that we would pre-paint everything and then put it together, except for the, of course, the PT on the base and, you know, support. But otherwise, it'd be a bear to try to paint that in, you know, afterwards. And I'm thinking about using the soy-based products that, out of Hardwick. And they may, they may, you know, offer to, because that holds up really well and has a nice tone to it, you know?
Do they have an exterior?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I've used it. It's, it's a good product. It's a good product. Great.
Well, I know the skating rink crew, there's a number of painters in that group, so.
So you would paint the wood before you even put the screens in and stuff?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, trying to cut that all in afterwards would be a pain. So, okay, well, thank you for your continued work. Most appreciated. How about ARPA?
ARPA, you guys probably haven't had a chance to look at the applications we have, I would imagine.
Well, I had Brandy, Brandy prison us all out because there was too many to sort through online. So here's one for Chris. Here's one for you.
Come on, word.
And you can, I mean, we're not going to look at them tonight, but now we have.
I just, I took some notes on the list that Tara put together of the different applications, just kind of where they would fall, maybe more for Brandy's purposes. You know, some of them fall under sort of municipal town and then some of them fall under school. And there was a lot of applications that I felt like maybe people sort of misunderstood the application process. And I didn't, we didn't really consider them legitimate applications. They were more suggestions. You know, a lot of them had to do with the roads. People would just say, you know, taxpayer asking for $190,000 to resurface the Woodbury Elementary from Route 14 to Woodbury Elementary.
Well, by, by sending out the application to everybody who got the survey, it kind of asked for some of that. That people would think, you know, I'll fill this out, see what happens.
Right, yep, and we all, you know, had different votes on all of these things. I didn't really think that we should send it to everybody, but. Just let the record show. It was a lot of, it's costly to send basically, but I, I thought that people could seek it out at the town parks office if they needed it. But other folks felt like it should go to everybody. So that's, I was, I don't know. But I also feel like maybe the application itself, we could have made clear in that regard. So, so that, you know, even the tent from Elizabeth Stratton for $4,000, that needs, to me, it needs to be sort of entered by the town, an application of that sort, because somebody needs to be in charge of it and help people set it up or teach them how to do it.
Well, that's, what I was going to suggest for this board is to maybe it's, look, look these all over and maybe have a special meeting where we invite some of these people in to explain why they want these certain things. Like ask Elizabeth what we're going to do about all those things having to do with a tent. And ask the fire department why they're asking for what they're asking for. And ask the library what they would do with this $10,000 that they want, things like that. Do you think we should?
I think it would be much smarter if we could.
Review it on a one-on-one basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a list. Thank you.
Yeah, so there was, there was a point where I thought maybe we were going to do that, but then it clarified that that would be more of your role. So, yeah, I do think you need to hear firsthand what, why people want the different things. And I think that, that when I say it's not a legitimate application, it's legitimate that these people had opinions about things and they're listed here. But there's some, there's some things that you, you just need to kind of dig a little deeper on. Like there's a resident who has some concerns about storm water that's running off of the direction neighbors of ours coming down our road and then coming onto their land. And so I did include some comments. I've been communicating with Katie from, from Outliver Cities and Towns, and she had a lot of really interesting input. So I'm going to give to you guys some of her answers to some of my questions. Because I thought that was really interesting and helpful, just sort of keeping your mind on what the ARPA funds were intended for. And then what, you know, for example, for the person, the person in town that was concerned about the storm water, sort of what precedent does that make if we're helping storm water issues in one person's property? Are you then opening the door for other people saying, well, if that storm water issue?
Right, and if it's a legitimate problem, the, the road commissioner should just look at it.
Yeah, so I had a chance to speak with them and they had, you know, they, they're, the company was very, very knowledgeable about water and roads. And we suggested just go down and talk to them. And so I don't know if they have yet, but they, they, yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about, I haven't heard from anybody.
Yeah, 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 so anyway.
Which road is this?
It's our, our Charlie.
Oh, Charlie.
Yeah.
Or is Gerald, Mark, Gerald Ainsworth, he's called Sharky.
Sharky, oh, yeah. Love those stories. Yeah, so anyway, I think they had a legitimate concern, but I was just wondering whether maybe that they would address it with you guys and then perhaps come to a meeting and talk to you guys about it. And maybe somehow some funding or some attention could be paid to it, if it seemed like a legitimate concern.
That's a mean hill.
But if it's not, yeah, but if it's personal, then it's.
Two years ago. I haven't, I haven't heard a single about it.
Okay, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not versed in it, but they are, so I don't want to speak for them. And they had a lot of good, you know, ideas about how maybe some of this could easily, so.
Do all the, you'd know, do all the houses up there, I noticed one's not being lived in anymore, that trailer that's, that seems to be not, you know, the one on the left going down the hill?
Oh, somebody's moved that.
Oh, somebody's moved back there.
Left.
But do all the, all the.
Just down below your house.
Oh, yeah, there.
Or above your house.
All the driveways have culverts under, under them?
Yes, I think, well, we do, I don't know.
I, I know the people that.
Which one is your house?
We're in the, uh, 326, it's the old barn.
Oh, yeah.
With the pond.
Yeah, that one's good.
You guys have done some great work for us over the years, not for us, but for the roads. That helps us. Yes. So, anyway, there, I, we, you know, Stephen has spoken with folks from roads.
And I know those folks that Laura is talking about have talked to the roads through about that problem before.
Yeah, so it's a sluice pipe and it's, you know, it, it's being sort of considered as like a stream, but they are thinking it not so much a stream as, as that the road is being, like the, the water's being diverted from the road through their property. And that's a concern for them.
Where's that?
It's, um, oh, well.
So it's one house down from the, us, the barn on the, on the right. If you go down the hill, we're on the right. There are the next house down on the left. Anna, May Clark and Rodson.
I haven't heard a word from them, but.
Yeah, so maybe they're putting their thoughts together in a.
Yeah, well, they, they submitted this, so once we tell them that this is probably not the way they need to go.
Yeah.
They should start with the people who know what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah. And that was how I felt about a lot of these applications where it really would be the roads folks that would put in an application if they wanted to do one of these projects, not necessarily a taxpayer that puts into the, you know, request. But, and the other, I think the only other thing of note really would be that there's some tricky sort of accounting that Brandy will need to do around if, if you guys approve money for the fire department. They're not a nonprofit, they are non. They're not a nonprofit, they are a nonprofit, but they're not technically a nonprofit by the way that it's looked at through the nonprofit cities and towns, so it, there's a sort of workaround that needs, would need to happen to put that through, you're probably aware of this.
Yeah, I would not be cutting anything for payroll out of the town for that, it'd be a one check. They would have to deal with the payroll, the taxes, the disbursements, not me.
Okay, so, yeah, so she said if the towns want to fund organizations that are not 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(19), then there are ways to do this, but it will require moving the ARPA money through the general ledger in a different way, swapping ARPA into the operating budget to free up general funds that can be used instead of ARPA direct funding. Uh, before this is done, reach out to Sarah Macy at, so, I appreciate the call, you were in the rounds. So anyway, so some of this did, I thought it was interesting to talk with Katie and learn a little bit more about it, and so I included some of our responses, that might be helpful, and then I thought it might be nice for you guys to see the actual surveys, because people wrote a lot of comments on them, so these are the, the, the original copies with, with comments and exclamation points and stars and whatnot.
No, we didn't see those.
No, I'm giving you, I'm giving you them now.
Oh.
So, I'm giving, what I'm handing you over is the originals from the surveys. You have the survey results, but I included another copy in case you didn't get that. My, my little blurb about the survey and then my little chart with the results. Did you guys see that?
That's very nice.
Yes, thank you.
I can't believe you made sense out of that survey, that's really.
Well, I wrote the survey, so it'll make sense of it, yeah, so this is sorry, it's a little like doggy, but.
Oh, right.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, so I guess my last thing I wanted to say was sort of, was already spoken about, but I'd love to see not all of the funds spent, I mean, we have, there's way too much put in that could ever be covered by the money that we have so far.
For the two sixty-three, two hundred and sixty-three thousand?
So it's one, what, thirty-eight for the first and one thirty-eight for the two, second, yeah, so the second will August.
We'll be getting the second payment.
One thirty-eight times two.
Yeah. Yeah, and so the way we, when we put the application out, we put it out with the intention that people could, you know, go for it on this round, if they weren't, they didn't get the money that they were looking for, it would be put in to the next round, and that there would be a next round. And that would happen, the next application round would be due, um, May second, next year. So, I just wanna sort of honor that, that, that there are people that might be cooking up some good ideas or whether it be, you know, things that the planning commission's doing, so, um, maybe, maybe hold off on spending all of it. That's my advice.
But it has to be spent, it has to be spent.
By twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, some time.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's.
You really don't have to rush this.
No, and the, and Outliga Cities and Towns recommends that the towns slow down and let ideas develop, and let people come up with good ideas, because it's easy to like throw an idea out there and not really have it worked out. So that's when you have people come in, I think, and say, this is a good idea, but we're gonna need some more information. You know, there was someone that asked for some money for their business, their personal business.
Well, clearly it's supposed to, money is supposed to be to help municipal services, not for personal. I mean, if there's some, probably some towns that have enough money so they can do like a business program, but.
Yeah, and, and, and the original guidelines, there was, is, you know, money, in the money category that was for people who had a, who suffered under COVID.
Yeah.
So that they would get sort of hold back from COVID, but the, the application that the person put in, I couldn't see, I mean, I could imagine how it could connect with COVID, but it wasn't written that way. So you could either say to the person, I'm sorry, this doesn't fall under ARPA guidelines, or you could say, maybe, but we're gonna need some different information, and so, that's a lot. She has a farm, she wants to start some farm stands and things like that, so. I mean, I can, I can get there in my mind, thinking that, um, people in Woodbury growing their own food is a good thing in terms of, you know, pandemics and hazards in town and things that might happen, but I think it's a little bit of a stretch, and they, she would have needed to define that, it's not there.
So what's your timeline for this process? I know when it's supposed to be completed, but it, you, you need to figure out how this is all going, by a certain time, I would imagine, and, no?
Well.
In terms of the actual choice of who, who is gonna receive these?
I think at this point it's you, yeah.
I know, but I mean, but, but that's a process, I mean, I understand it's coming to us, but my, my question is the timeline for that to happen, and when this comes to us.
It is to.
It is to us.
You got it, and, yeah.
This is to us.
But not, this, I mean, we're making decision on these as this?
No, no, not now.
No, I understand that, but that's, that's my question.
Those are the, those are the applications, and they're that big pile.
I understand, but I'm asking about the process and the timeline.
Yeah, I think I would say that you're gonna take your time and look through them and get the gather of information that you need, and that the ARPA committee is just handing it to you guys at this point, because we don't, you know, there's a fine line, actually, there's a clearly defined line, and we, I think we've done our, the part that you guys were looking for us to do, and now you guys get to decide.
Thank you. So there might be some, for example, of a pavilion thing, you know, some where we wanna get the money out right away, some like the town hall, might be some renovations that wanna get started this year, and.
I don't believe we made any. Yeah, I don't believe we made any, in any of our paperwork that we put out there, that there was any.
Ranking and.
No, that we never gave a timeline, you know, that basically that it was, you know, you may or may not get the money, and it might come at any old time, that the, probably sometime this year, I would imagine. And I called a few people that were on that list that I felt like, you know, I'm not sure that this is really an application, but I just wanted to thank you for putting it in and.
Oh, that was nice.
And, you know, it may pass, but probably not, you know, because some of them just.
Some of these are kind of out there.
Yeah. What was it, two hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, it was spring when people were writing these, so there are a lot of feelings about roads that I think that that happens in every town all over, you know, you guys are doing a great job.
Well, thank you very much.
A lot of people in Callis talk about how much better ARPA is.
Oh, really?
I have a lot of Callis friends, and they're always saying, Woodbury Roads.
Oh, I've heard that before, for years, yeah, I've heard that for years.
Well, we, is it half, half the mileage that, that's, that Callis has or something like that?
Yeah, there's a lot of, of that roads.
They have eighty-eight, around eighty-eight.
Okay.
Well.
So later we could decide whether we wanna have a special meeting to look over these and decide who we wanna invite in for some more questions.
I think that'd be the right decision.
Yeah, okay.
And feel free to ask us any questions if you're not understanding, you can scratch.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Highway Department report.
Well, there's a lot of stuff tonight. The first one is, is a pop-up camper sitting in a little class four room, but it's just sad. Nobody's around. Um, I was gonna move it this morning, but my wife stopped me in to wait until I talked to you folks tonight.
Wives, no danger.
Is it something you can move without damaging it? We have it.
It's got a hitch on it.
Huh?
It's got a hitch on it, I'll tell you.
Do you know who owns it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, but these girls here can probably tell you.
Yeah, the PT, the PTTR states who it is, no telephone, we have an address.
That states who owns the piece of land.
Correct.
It doesn't state who owns the camper.
Correct.
True, but the, yeah, but the people who own the land are kind of responsible for what goes on, on it. This is the, this is a tiny little half-acre piece of land that the new quarry road spur goes through, and Coleman went and sold it to somebody. Now they're gonna have to, and they, they're thinking they can build on it, but.
That hasn't let it happen.
No. They can have all the tents they want, but.
But they're gonna have to move them too, because they're still in the yard.
Okay, do you know anybody who can, who needs work, who can just go out and look at, have them show the, where the center line is and mark the boundaries of the right of way, it seems like that would be helpful.
Is that Bob, a zoning, should be like?
I'm too busy to do something like that, what?
That's a state law.
Oh, I realize that, but, but in order to show the people where they can't build, where the right of way is, somebody to just go out with a handful of flags and, you know, I don't know, is he funny looking for work?
Not that kind of work, you know.
Diana, you ready to throw some flags?
I would say that it should be put right into the zoning laws, that they need to contact road commissioner, whoever, and he'll come up and show them where the right of way is.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna run around doing everywhere.
No, no, but most people aren't that close, so.
But this character, if, he had better be sleeping in his tent and have us start working on the road, he and the tenant would be wrong.
So, what is, is there a, a general setback that is common?
Twenty-five feet from the center of the road.
From the center of the road.
Each way.
So it's fifty feet overall.
Well, it's three rods, actually, nine rods, yeah.
He actually has three roads he's dealing with, correct?
Right.
Oh, it would be.
He's in between two.
He's in between two, yeah.
But the zoning, I think is three, twenty-five feet from the.
That's kind of the standard.
Zoning.
Twenty-five feet.
When I put my house in over there, I had to be fifty feet from the center of the road.
Yeah, but you're on a class three. There's a separate pri, well, maybe it's just private roads that are twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So by the time you get a setback from fifty feet, there ain't no way he can go put anything in there, because there's a road here, a road here, a road here, and one that goes across the top. And he's only got a third of an acre. Or half an acre.
Half an acre.
Whatever it is.
Maybe a five by ten in the middle, if that.
Make a good house.
Just thinking the same thing.
Yeah, but where are they gonna put their traffic system?
Call it restroom, is that what's gonna be on the, on the road?
So, anyway.
Anyway.
I'm gonna move the camper, but it's going to the town garage. And I expect to have a letter written from the slide board saying where it is, and storage is thirty dollars a day, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars to move it.
Alright, so they're not gonna do it, it, it's.
Fifty dollars a day?
Thirty dollars.
Oh, thirty dollars a day and.
A hundred and fifty bucks to move it.
Each way, or?
Well, I ain't moving it back. There ain't no way I'll move it back.
Okay.
I'll move it to the junkyard.
Yeah, okay. They have an address that's fairly local, right, like?
Yeah, Waitsfield.
Yeah, I mean, they're not out of state.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It, it might be good to check with D-Trans and just see what different state laws say what a town can do about that. No?
Okay. I think you, you, you gotta act up.
That's not right, yeah, like Robin said, if some, now, the sign is already on the wrong road, so if somebody follows that old quarry road sign, they're gonna run right into that thing, so.
I agree, it needs to be moved.
And we have no contact information other than an address.
We don't have a phone.
They did come get a zoning permit.
For what?
Application.
An application. So I don't know if they, you know, mailed it to Bob, or if they are just.
We have their phone number. Well, so do you need our, our authorization to do that, or you, is?
I think you ought to.
Okay, wanna move that?
Sure. I'll write the letter.
So that's a motion you second?
I'll second the motion to move that camper out from that.
I mean, it's a pop-up, it's not like it's a.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
Out from the right of way to the town garage.
With the associated fees.
You gotta do it. You gotta do it.
And they can come back and get it after they pay their.
Well, they're not going to, I bet, but anyway, that's speculation, but.
It is.
That meter's gonna run pretty fast.
Well, they can negotiate.
You better do the negotiation, because they ain't negotiating with this old boy.
I'm sure if somebody would like to call Coleman Parker, he probably has the contact for them.
Who?
Coleman Parker.
Oh. Uh-huh, that's a nice idea, Brandy.
Okay, did we, did we vote on that?
No, no. Yeah, let's vote on, now, did I make a motion?
Yeah, and you seconded, let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, so moved. Keep going, Chuck. So, yeah, you see, do you have an agenda?
Oh, by the law.
Can I ask you a question real quick to clarify? That seven thousand dollars is for this past year, strictly only?
No.
No, it's just coming up here.
We've already dealt with that last year.
This coming year, twenty-three.
It's for fiscal year twenty-three, it's not for twenty-two that we're in right now.
Right.
Okay.
Next winter.
Next winter, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Um, whoops, I didn't.
So I had a question, uh, we didn't do the winter sand advertisement yet, because I wasn't clear, that we wanna do a three-year contract, and if we do, you said we only need like fifteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred yards more?
For this year.
For this year, but in the future years, should it be four thousand like it was before?
Probably.
Okay, okay. Well, fortunately, we have all the documents, the ads and the contracts and stuff that Skip Lindsay made up the last time we went through this, and Brandy has them in electronic form, so we can tweak those without having to make things up again.
And do you know who you're gonna send them to?
We're gonna put an ad in the News and Citizen. I guess we could put the hardwood gazette too.
Gazette would be nice.
Okay. Most of the sand and gravel in this area is between hardwood and moorsville, so.
Used to be all along Route fourteen.
Yeah.
Well, it's on Route fifteen.
Well, there ain't no gravel there either, it's all ledge that they crush. It's pretty hard to buy gravel now.
So, the five-fifty truck, we've already approved that.
You have? Okay.
Oh, wait, wait, we.
The, the proposal for the fixing of the five-fifty truck?
I think that's what he's asking us to do.
Okay.
No, uh, if it's done, it's done, it's good.
Okay, well.
You have, have you seen it?
Were the minutes, the last minutes?
What?
Were the last minutes saying?
No, it wasn't, what was, the last meeting was three weeks ago, so, we hadn't talked about this at all. So, let's just approve it. If, I mean, I really have nothing, I, I don't know.
I think it's a good price, and, you know, they're putting on used doors, and, and you're gonna get, if you get a year out of it, so much the better for.
Well, I'm hoping to get at least two out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we put a new body on the back of it, bought that sander, we're gonna do some work on the plow, but that's minor.
And as you said, the price of new trucks and availability are off the charts right now.
Availability, I don't think you can find a five-fifty, I don't know, Toyota Dodge or Chevy or not, but they're not building them. And one of them, one, five-fifty or one ton or whatever you wanna call it, would be a hundred and twenty thousand. And these roads need all of that hundred and twenty thousand.
So do you, do you make a motion?
I can make that motion, sure.
I'll make a motion of approval.
Okay, you make the motion, I'll second it.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
It's eight thousand, for the record, eight thousand six hundred and ninety-two was the estimate from Leroux Brothers Auto in.
I, I think it's a proposal, not an estimate, isn't it?
It says estimate.
It's an estimate.
Estimate, okay.
Well, yeah, but they'll, they'll be right there.
But it's a, it's, the estimate has a deadline on it, and we're within the deadline.
Thirty days, okay.
No, they'll be right there.
Yeah. So it says Glover Road, but what is the town, is it Glover?
Barton.
Barton?
I believe it's Barton, yeah, yeah, it is Barton.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five-fifty is gonna get worked on.
Okay.
Ordering new truck.
I just thought we should bring that up.
Well, that's good.
We've talked about it for a while.
I've got a couple of things about that.
Okay.
Seems like we have a nice surplus on. Seems like we have a nice surplus on Glover. There's two trucks in New York being built right now. And I believe we can get our name on one of them to have it delivered in February. Well, end of January, early February. It's a Western Star, same as what, we have a freight loader, but the only thing difference is the nose cone. The same truck. And I think we can get a pretty good price on it.
You've, you've talked with them, obviously.
So what, what do we have in our HERF fund?
Well, I'd like to see that stay there for a while. She get a lot of extra money, she wants to do something with this fall, this, before the end of fiscal year.
Befootwell.
So then
You can carry it forward, right? And so instead of
So we've never put actuals, and this is where the CPA is gonna put in his recommendation and his, for carryover. Um, because you look at a financial statement of the highway right now, and you're seventy thousand away from the expenses income, but your carryover is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand right now in the highway. We're not gonna spend that in two weeks. In the HERF, there's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
If, to get and avoid interest, as far as paying off the loader
I would like to see that happen, that was my other part.
And then possibly put more down on the Low Pro and get rid of some interest there. No sighing, Diana.
We got, we gotta do something, 'cause you got a pile of junk over there. And you got some roads that need some serious attention, as in gravel.
Well, we've been talking about a new truck for
Yeah, we have.
Long time.
So, we get rid of
With the fiscal year coming
Yep.
There'll be another installment into the reserve fund.
Yeah, yeah, and we still, and this amount still is lacking another quarter from Swenson, but
Right.
But, um
Well, it's time to, it's time to play catch-up if we got jammed.
If we can get the interest
Because you're gonna have one of them trucks, it's gonna be set inside your road somewhere with a major problem. They're ten years old.
Well, you So if the thirteen can be sold, we're holding off until
We're getting a price on a trade-in.
Yep.
Do you want the price of the truck in New York that's being built?
Not a hundred percent right now, but I will tomorrow.
Okay.
Close.
Ballpark?
I'm guessing somewhere around two hundred and forty thousand.
Uh-huh.
And, and that's a gas.
Yeah.
It could be as much as two-seventy.
Is that pretty much what you've been expecting?
Oh, yeah.
But you were expecting to maybe have, get to order one this year and not get it till next year, so
Exactly, but if we could end up with a new truck this year and some money left over to HERF fund next year to either go towards that one ton or the next ten-wheeler, you've got, the ten-wheelers only two years' pay, one year's pay.
One year's pay.
So we got a thirteen and a fourteen. And it's time to get rid of the thirteen. And before we get a hold of another one and be able to pay for it, you're gonna be another five years. So one of them's gonna be fifteen years old and has been rode.
And that's hoping that the Grader and everything else
And everything's sold up, which we've been doing a lot of work on.
Right.
Well, the Grader's in good shape, but Greg, you have talked about that extensively, and if we had to put an engine in it, it'd be worth doing. So, I'm not too concerned about the Grader, but that one ton and those two ten-wheelers, I'm concerned about big time.
Well, it's worth, I mean, I think that's a big thing that we can't just approve at a meeting that hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been warned. But
Chuck, can you give us a real number and a quote?
Well
Well, you won't, you won't know the trade-in though, or will you?
That truck's been having a, a break job done on it now, so I will know what they'll allow us within a couple of days.
So, if we could have a comparative set of numbers, I think that that's easier to work on.
Would that get traded into Charleboy, the freight liner?
That's the plan right now.
Yeah, okay. And that money could go into the reserve fund also, or go towards the new truck.
Well, it'd be a down payment to those new trucks.
And so it does seem that with, if this truck isn't gonna be ready until January, February, then we'll have the new installment for the new fiscal year, it seems like we would have enough money in the reserve fund to buy that truck outright.
Right, to
Well, between that and the money that's left over, and we still owe we still owe five years on the Low Pro?
Yeah.
Four years, five years?
It'd be nice if we just bought, yeah, but it'd be nice if we just bought a truck.
Well, that's all we're gonna do, but there's still gonna be almost a hundred thousand dollars left over, that should be going into
Paying off.
Getting that Low Pro paid off.
Paying off.
Yeah, we can talk about that later.
Yeah, that's, that's
Yeah, well, yeah, but we, I wanna be very vocal, 'cause I don't want you spending it on something else.
You don't want us to give it to the fire department?
That's right.
The highway is on the highway.
You're on record, you can't touch that.
Come back.
No, the fire, the highway department, the highway money has to be spent.
Well, but I, and it seems to me like this is a good time to play catch-up from being so far behind with no HERF fund and and the trucks getting run right into the ground. If we can do it without raising taxes
Exactly.
I'm all for it. And I would think most any taxpayer in town would be for it.
I mean, I would suggest getting this truck, seeing what money is left over, and then making a plan on how to spend what's left over if you wanna pay off on the the Low Pro or, or the bucket loader, you'll finish
Well, the bucket loader's a
There's two more payments today.
Twelve, yeah, there's thirteen thousand left, that's four years.
Really should write a check for that right now. And not have that payment anymore. I don't know how much interest there is on it, but it's gonna be twelve thousand, probably what, five hundred bucks?
So I will make an Excel spreadsheet of paying off the loader and then getting the Low Pro, if we pay in advance, what we'd be saving for interest.
That'd be great.
What we need is a, is a nice spreadsheet of all our equipment like we used to have, in fact, I was gonna ask John Reed if he would work on that.
Which is fine, but nobody is saying anything to reject new, new, and then to see the amount in there. It's not, you're not gonna get away with just putting this little bit of money in when stuff right now is huge money. This has just been a carryover.
The thing with it is, you know, we're, we're sending them trucks down there every year. The first, when I first get in there, the first time we sent this truck, it's down there now, we put forty-seven thousand dollars in that truck.
Down where?
Charlie Boys.
Charlie Boys, okay.
To be gone through, to make sure it was good for the winter plow and stuff. And it's been progressively worse every, uh, alas, every year. Last year, I think, was thirteen thousand dollars, but, you know, that's
That adds up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've paid for a third of a truck right there.
That's, that's why, you know, when we first started talking about this, um, you know, we were kind of looking at the model of hardwood where they have a, like, a seven-year replacement cycle.
Replacement cycle, yes.
So they don't get
Never really get stuck with a truck.
Theory is, is that after about seven years, you're gonna start spending a lot of money on repairs, which you could be applying towards a new, a new truck.
Right.
So
Well, I would like to see those two ten-wheelers replaced every five years. One of them replaced every five years. So you've got, you'd be working on a ten-year plan for a truck. And if you These trucks were never set down there until I, to Charlie Boys to be gone through before I started being a road commissioner. And that needs to start happening on the second year. Send them down there, you know, you might put five or six thousand dollars in it this year, but next year you might only put a couple of thousand in it. And it's money well spent, where if you wait for the seven years till warranty, and some of that work that you send down there will be warranty wear. If you wait till the seven years when the warranty works, now, then all of a sudden you lit a fifty thousand dollar bill. And you gotta get ahead of that.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, sounds like we got a good road commissioner, which we didn't have for a long time, so
Thank you, bye.
So, Brandy, can you put that into numbers and models and all that stuff so that we can just see it on paper?
Yes.
And then timeline, uh, in terms of expending and, and what we're committing to?
Um, it's gonna have to be fairly short. I mean, next meeting or
We could do it at the next meeting?
I, I would think, I'll get, I will talk to him tomorrow, we'll, I'll talk to him extensively tomorrow, find out what it's gonna cost. And what they'll give us for our truck. And Brandy and I'll get together and we'll have something for you next month, next meeting.
Great.
And that will include every, all your equipment so that, that you will know
Unless she gets sick of working with it.
Well, I mean, we could just do the truck for now, and then we can see what's left, can't we?
Well, I, I would like to hear a motion tonight to pay for the loader. I really would.
Get it over with.
Get it over, we're on it. And what'd you say, fourteen thousand, twelve thousand?
Is that gonna cut into the hundred and fifty-seven whatever you've got?
Yes.
Left over?
Yeah, it'll come out of the reserve fund.
Or
Why wouldn't you bake it right out of the
It can come out of the highway.
Yeah.
Can come out of the highway, okay.
Nail it right out of the highway.
Out of the hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
So that's leave us a hundred and forty thousand dollars plus whatever.
Is in the HERF.
And that should be a little more than enough to buy that ten-wheeler. And if that one doesn't work out and we have to order one and wait a year, then I'd like to see the Low Pro get paid now, or paid off.
So pay off the loader, you said about, what, fifteen, sixteen?
It's around thirteen thousand.
Thirteen thousand.
Six thousand something.
Okay.
Yeah, October.
So what do we have to vote on tonight to make sure that, that we're kicking things into motion as, as we're discussing? Do we?
I don't have a problem with paying off, with approving, paying off the loader, because we got the money.
You gotta hold on that.
But I think we should wait until the next meeting so we can warn the fact that we're gonna buy a new truck, that's kind of a big thing.
But I want me, I wanna hear you tell me that all three are on that page, and that's where we're headed. You know, uh, uh, I don't wanna call this character out from Charlie Boys and say, "Well, they're thinking about it," and then all of a sudden, you say no.
Yeah, we've been talking about it forever.
Just saying, we don't know what the trade-in's gonna be and stuff, but we're
You're going to know, 'cause the truck is down there now, they'll go over it, the trade-in, I'll have a bottom line before next meeting.
Okay, well, just tell them that we're, we have to have it at a warned meeting. We have to have it on the agenda, and then, I, it sounds good to me, I think we've been
So you're, you're on board with, going ahead with it?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
And we're gonna vote on to, to pay off the loader tonight?
That would be nice.
Okay. We'll wait till Chris comes back.
That turtle might have gotten him.
We got
Yeah.
They were all over the roads this morning.
Really?
I can tell you what we've been doing while we're waiting for Chris to go home.
He's back.
Oh, all right.
So the turtle's in full moon. I think, I think they're related.
Ah.
Oh, really?
I've been watching the moon, yeah.
Yeah, it explains why they're
Tomorrow's the full moon.
All over the road.
Oh, they have been for weeks.
Strawberry moon?
Today more than
It's been busy.
Yeah.
Lot of, lot of them crossing their heads.
So, Chris, we were just talking about approving the paying off of the loader.
I would approve that immediately.
Okay.
That's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're gonna put, uh, buying a new truck, ordering a new truck on the agenda for the next meeting, and and Chuck, is, do you approve going ahead with that? I mean, we can't prove it now, but
I, I, we can't, we can't actually go through it.
Right, right, he just wants to know.
I just wanna make sure you're all on board, so when I get the price, I haven't wasted this character's time.
I, I would like to do it personally, yeah, I think it's a really good idea. But we don't have to make them years ago.
Right, we can't really make, we're just giving them a
I want you to say yes, go.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think we have a blessing to
Keep going.
To move forward with it.
Going ahead, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and if anybody wants to come and object, they can.
But Chuck, can we see some numbers, some, at, at some point?
He's gonna have some.
Our truck is a Charlie Boys sale, I've made goddamn
So can we
So they're gonna, I, I'm gonna do my best to make sure that you've got numbers before next meeting.
Sounds great.
And which truck is that, that's, that they have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thirteen.
It's a thirteen truck.
And like I say, the other ones are fourteen, so I mean, that one, we're gonna have to send to Charlie Boys, have it gone through, and we're gonna have to post attention to it so we can get another
Winner out of it.
Four, well, another four years.
Yeah.
So you can have enough of your HERF fund to pay another one, buy another one.
So we're gonna have to build that fund back up again.
Yeah.
So this money that we just approved for the five-fifty, this nine thousand dollars, is that also coming out of this surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah, past you.
And my memory that even though there's a difference in, in a year, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, both trucks were purchased at the same time.
Same time.
Yeah.
Been working the same
Yeah, there's only like
Six months difference between them.
Well, there's only like four thousand miles difference between them, I mean, they
What is a mileage, out of curiosity?
One of them's gotten, well, as of what's today, what, last Wednesday, one of them had ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and something, the other one's got a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and So, the mileage, you know, is right there. I would really like to see one that the town could pay for, even if something really happened and we had borrowed money on the second one. At least we ain't got two payments.
Together, yeah.
Together.
That's why we set up that fund in the first place. So you start buying a truck.
Right.
Buying a truck outright, that was the goal.
That was the goal.
The goal was to be able to buy a truck.
How long has that been going on?
The highway
We've never been able to do that yet, but that was
This is, that was the, that was the purpose.
The HERF fund was approved by the voters when Vale Leach was on the board.
Oh, my word.
Yeah, so it's been around for a long time, but it's
But it went away for a long time.
Well, it wasn't used, wasn't used properly, from when we started doing the leasing and all that stuff, yeah.
Right, board members wanted to do the leasing route instead of, and then kick money back to reduce taxes, and they're just get us in the
It was a nightmare.
Yeah.
Wasn't there, but looking back, it was not, I agree.
We're on a roll now.
Yep.
Chuck and I will work, we'll get a, we'll see the savings on the paying off on the loader, see the interest savings on the, I'll look at numbers for the Low Pro, and then
I would love to not be paying interest on anything. That would be my ideal goal, right?
But you know.
Right.
Be nice to not be paying interest on anything, and like last year, buying, pre-buying gravel.
Pre-buying gravel?
It's saving a dollar and a half a yard.
Sounds pretty good, right?
It does, does.
So.
And it, I think it can happen, it's just.
We have to.
It takes time and.
We have to decide on it and we also.
We can't back off.
Yeah, we can't let it go.
Or keep putting it off to the side where it's not gonna get any better. And it's kind of like the expansion of the, the herf. Yeah.
But by the time you get done, if you keep sweeping around the rug, the rug's gonna be this high. It's time to do something with it.
It's a lot of rugs.
My dirt.
Okay, so the last on this item is the, uh, the box culvert.
Yeah, so I have some, um, an update on that. Um, I contacted Shauna Clifford, um, about that, uh, grant and the town has until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the design of the culvert, so
Hmm.
I've been procrastinating for quite a while. I can procrastinate a lot longer if I want to. But I do have, I have an RFP that I've sent to Shauna and Logan Perrin, they're gonna review it and, um, I wanted to ask Brandy, will we, this is a design for a box culvert, do we need all of the insurance?
Not for the design, no.
Okay, all right, so this will be much simpler, um.
And we've already reviewed.
I thought it was one started.
We've reviewed all that, I thought. Didn't we review all of that?
I thought it was a design in everything of the box culvert.
No, 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 that hasn't happened yet. We did get the grant for it a while ago now.
Yeah.
And it was extended to when, twelve?
It wasn't extended at all, the, the grant went till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. I was inquiring about getting an extension, thinking that it would end at the, this, end of this fiscal year, in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, but, um, Shauna informed me that, um, we have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
To, to approve it or to actually receive it?
To have the design work done.
Oh, okay.
And the report, um, you know, back to them.
So the project's not gonna happen this year, so, plus we don't, we won't even have, know it's gonna be funded until after the.
This will be just for the design and then once the design work is done, then we would go for, uh,
Applied for a grant.
Apply for a grant.
How long's that design good for? I mean, does it, does it, uh, end, say after a year?
No, no, the design is good for, forever. I mean, it's, it's basically the, the design will be, and then they will construct the culvert, like on Nelson Pond.
Right, right.
Um, you know, they'll, cons, some company will, um, uh, construct the, uh, culvert. And then, you know, we'll have, um, some contractor, um, put the thing together, put it in place. So, but the, the, what the design will include is the actual design of the culvert, but then all of the different permits that have to be, um, um, you know, different hoops like that, um, that, they'll do all of that work too. And, you know, the, uh, Shauna suggested that we definitely send this uh, RFP to, um, the fellow up in Saint J, Ruggles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, the fellow who designed the Nelson Pond, um, culvert, I can't remember his name at the moment. And then maybe send it out to a couple others, um. I don't know if Dubois and King does any work, but there's another firm that we set things for, they're down in Waterbury, Montana, and they're, they're always way overpriced.
In here, maybe, or?
Hmm, DeWolf?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, they're, yeah.
They're the ones that designed the Cabot Road.
Hmm.
Yeah, right.
Our old house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had, uh, same, same personal experience.
But that way we can get the match in the budget.
Yeah.
For next.
For next year.
Yeah.
So my plan is to, um, send that RFP to Shauna and Logan Perrin tomorrow, get the review on it and then, um, and then once they send it back, I will send it to the select board to review and the road commissioner. And we can, um, approve, hopefully approve to send it out at the next select board meeting.
Good.
And the design work could be done, hopefully before the winter. Uh, that's kind of my hope, depending on how busy they are.
Busy.
Hmm.
But it's not a big project.
No.
No, that's true.
And the Vtrans did do the hydraulic study for that, so that's one less thing that they decided we'll have to do.
I know we talked about it, but I know it's not germane to this cu- box culvert, but, uh, there's a culvert underneath, what's that, Church Street, what's the street that goes up by?
Church Street.
Church Street?
Yeah, all of those culverts, the culvert on Church Street, the culvert on Bailey Bridge Road, the same thing needs to happen to them at some point in the future, in the near future.
I'm not, I'm not so sure, but Greg has been telling me that Harry and he put that culvert in corner across Church Street.
Okay, I, yeah, I.
I don't remember it.
I don't remember it.
But that's what Greg's telling me, that that culvert's only nineteen years old.
Okay.
So I think that one, wow, we should have it looked over.
We'll take a look at it.
Um, the one in Bailey Bridge, I don't ever remember that one being done.
I know, I know Vtrans has looked at the one in Bailey Bridge and, um, you know, they aren't concerned, as much concerned about it as the one under Valley Lake Road, but they, it is deteriorating and it, you know, it's, it's not a, a, a red flag or anything, but should be something to consider in the near future.
Well, maybe, maybe the one on Church Street is too.
I'll, I'll look closer at it, but now mucking around the screen here, the Evers stuff.
Don't have too much fun.
I've had to unplug that thing last summer.
Really?
Yeah.
The culvert?
Yeah, under Church Street.
Hmm.
Yep.
I got a reminder email this morning from Rosgow and Agency Transportation about the, um,
Oh, good, glad you got that.
Road grants, that they need a signed letter by June twenty-fourth.
Well, I put the letter together and I don't know if Peter signed it or.
They did and I scanned it and I sent it.
Okay, so we should, we should be good.
Okay.
And I was gonna ask Brandy tonight if she did scan it and send it, but so.
Now, that was the money we talked about for your account?
That was the Rose General Permit, yeah, for the Grants and Aid Program this summer, yeah.
Okay.
So they'll send us back, uh, an, an announcement that, you know, that they got the letter and then, um, and then we're good to go the beginning of the new fiscal year on, um, getting the project, um, up on East Hill. Right now, Vtrans, it used to be that the Regional Planning Commission would come out and look over your plan and make suggestions, um, and that's all passed to, um, Vtrans now. So, um, and there's a, a, a committee or board or whatever that, um, that towns contact when they're ready for a project and, and they'll arrange to come and, and, um, you know, they'll meet with you and, and Greg, um, and you can tell them what you're planning and they'll, you know, yea or nay that, um, usually they just yea it, but they sometimes have suggestions on other, other parts of that. And then we take some before photographs and, and get to work and take some after photographs, um, send a report in, keep track of money spent on, you know, different things, um, and, uh, take some, um, after photographs and then they usually come out and just kind of take a look at it.
Michael, I don't know how you do all that and used to do all this too.
Yeah, well. That's why I needed to retire.
Before we totally burned you out. Gosh, we don't have to deal with that.
So we're past seven-thirty, other business and updates?
Um, we talked about the town meeting committee, um.
Hang on, just before you rush over off on. I had two letters sent to me from a couple over in Ragate, I think it is. Ragate, East Ragate, somewhere over there. And they bought that little trailer as you head down toward Nelson Pond on the right-hand side, it sets back in the woods. And that is a federal wetland out in front of it, and they're pushing to have a bigger culvert put in there. And I went over with my personal excavator last year and opened it up and the dam has dropped about, the swamp has dropped about a foot and a half. But it's full of cattails and I have called them and told them that we were not gonna put a bigger culvert in.
That's a, that's a driveway, right? It's not a public road.
They want it, they want the culvert changed down by the fishing access that lets the water out of that swamp into Nelson Pond.
No.
No.
The answer is no.
So.
I mean, it's a really simple answer.
Yeah, we don't do great wetlands for people so that their property's gonna be more valuable, no.
And aside from that, it's not even, it's not even our purview to do.
No, no, it's, not, it, no.
It's a federally designated wetlands area.
Exactly, and, um, like I say, I ditched it down through and the swamp dropped a foot and a half. And it's way further away from the camper than it's ever been, so I've told them no, so if you, now.
We'll back you on no.
Okay.
So if they need to talk to any of us.
Yeah.
Are they talking about building anything or?
No.
Wanting a permit or, good, okay, good.
It's just, it's basically a camp, are they living there?
There's no camp, no, it's an older couple, I mean, I've never seen them there, I've been over by there a dozen times, thinking I might catch them, but, um, I finally called them and told them that we weren't gonna change the culvert.
Yeah, no.
They didn't seem all that happy, so if you get calls from, and I've got the people's name over the house, I forgot to grab it tonight, but.
Okay.
All right, I'll shut up now.
No.
Until you, until seven forty.
Say no.
Whoops, it's seven forty, we better plow through our other business.
West Woodbury Cemetery, yeah.
Chris, do you have stuff?
It's been off to everybody.
I never got it.
Are you supposed to get it?
Well, I was the one that was gonna send it to the surveyor to get her started.
I will send it to you again.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Not that it's an official report.
That's, that's.
No, it just, it, you know, it just.
That's Bear's project?
It can be, it can be helpful to her.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, happy to.
Okay, thank you. We did the outdoor classroom.
Are we settled on that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we.
Okay.
I just, can I just clarify that? My, I, I, I was unclear in terms of whether this has gone through the whole food chain, the lawyer and everything else. Is that your understanding?
It has, everything is done.
Well, I, I didn't know that and I was part of that group, but.
Yeah.
Well, we just, uh, we said just sent it, you know, today, I think it was today.
It was today? Yeah.
We had, uh, decided maybe was the wrong decision, but not to bother to have our attorney review it because it seemed fairly.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
But they have their way.
Okay, uh. Fire Department, oh, MOU, meant?
There was a MOU from the, that the fire department has asked us to sign and Brandy asked us to hold on to that until the next meeting because the auditor was gonna have a comment about it.
He was reviewing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, which as long as it's done, the next meeting before the fiscal year, because it's based on the fiscal year.
On the fiscal year.
Is that about, and there was also a bill from them asking did the auditor think it was okay to have to pay them the, their truck fund and things like that? So it just sits in their account rather than ours, is, did they look at that at all?
Also looking at, um, well, yeah, he's looking at the MOU.
Okay.
Um, I would love for it to change so that we're not looking at a four thousand dollar payment July one.
Bye, Dave.
Um.
Bye, Dave. Take care.
And then I'm looking at borrowing money, um, to make it to October for our tax money to come in.
Yeah, we, we've asked them to change that date.
That date for a while.
A while, if you see what we're doing.
It gets me that they've got two accounts for paying for equipment. They got an equipment fund and then they got a truck fund.
But maybe their equipment means, you know, stock. You know, airbags and the air, you know.
They have a lot of equipment.
They have a lot of equipment.
And, and they're not, and they're not, and they're, and, and they don't divulge much, uh, in terms of their.